I believe it's six o'clock, Town of Hennessy Board Trustees Regular Meeting, April 11th, 2024, Town Hall, Councilroom at 6:00 P.M. Number one, call for order, roll call please.
Randy?
Here.
Bert?
Cliff?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
Dave? Here. Number two, report from Town Hennessy.
That thing.
Yeah.
Ad hoc.
Ad hoc?
Mm-hmm.
Is the agency?
Yeah, we gotta change it.
The town sound system, the guys were here right, or sometime last week, well, this week.
This week.
Maybe. Got it working, but found that several of the components got like hit by lightning or a surge, and ordered a few more parts and should have been, I think they're gonna be here tomorrow morning to finish it, so the whole thing will be working now. So, that's good news.
Anything about the car show?
It's still going, yeah. We need, probably need a report on parking and stuff and those kind of things.
We'll have some.
Okay, good. It's very, we broke it into, everybody has one little part this year rather than Tony doing one thing. And so, it's probably time, first of the week, to have our committee meetings again and see where everybody is, but, yeah.
I was told of a new event, and I think this is gonna be pretty awesome. It's like a Chinese fire drill kinda thing.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I like that. Okay. Oh, a new thing they're gonna do this year, it's, it's a spin on the old go-woe races that we used to have, one of those, but Barb does, but this time, so you, you take off as quickly as you can for just a couple hundred feet, stop, get out of the car, and pop a balloon with your butt.
Oh, that's the one I, so when they say go, you gotta run around the car, you and the passenger, run around the car and get in, so that's the Chinese fire drill to me.
Yeah.
And then you take off, and then you gotta stop in this-
Before you go out of the box, yeah.
This marked, this marked box, you gotta stop in that marked box, and then you gotta get out and go stop, pop a balloon.
Yeah.
And they're gonna do that in the burnout area before the burnouts, so that'll be like
a first thing in the morning thing, and then they'll wet the room and do the burnout thing after that.
Okay.
Did we get all the insurance and stuff lined up?
Still up in the air, yep. No one, it's, the challenge we're having is that it has to be somebody's event, and nobody wants to claim the event, and money, it's gonna be about fifteen hundred dollars to get the insurance, so.
Barbara, what's we got, uh, Wine Festival gonna be?
Is it the first Saturday in October?
Yeah, it's October 5th.
That's why I wanna make sure, 'cause there's been some stuff there.
John Nieses.
Aw, man.
Okay. Number three, consider approval of consent agenda. A, minutes of March meeting. B, approval of claims as follows. Number one, March purchase orders, three thousand eight fifty-eight oh one. March RSTF, five thousand one oh five. April, purchase order, forty thousand five five four seventy-eight. April RSTF, thirty-eight thousand five eighty-eight sixty-two. April cemetery care, zero. April juvenile fund, zero. April library fund, eighty-three dollars thirty-seven cents. April street and alley fund, three thousand three hundred thirty-four oh two. C, accept department reports. D, quarterly financial report from Crawford Associates. And E, budget amendments from Crawford and Associates.
Mr. Mayor, if you could strike the D and E, her mom had a stroke on Tuesday, so she was not able to finish that report for us.
So that's what I'm saying, I did not see those.
Yes.
So, we will take off the quarterly financial report from Crawford and Associates, and the budget amendments Crawford and Associates, so we will have those.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
No.
Four, settlement comments. You have anything, Barb?
No, thank you.
Okay. Number five, Town Administrators' Report, purchases and new employees.
You guys have my, um, my report, um, just something to add to that. Tomorrow at two P.M., we're gonna do some testing of the storm sirens. Last, what was it, about a week and a half ago, a week ago, we tested them right before the weather was supposed to get bad, because they had just finished installing them, and installers were here, but we tested them with the computer system. Um, in this room back here is a computer system where you can set off the alarms, or the sirens. Um, we also programmed radios that day, um, to where they can send a signal to them from the radios, so if they're out and about, they can actually activate the sirens from their cars. We were not able, because the weather came in rather quickly, we were not able to test those, so we're gonna test those tomorrow at two.
So, are they all working now?
Uh, we still have, they still have to come in and finish, um, when they hooked up the one over here by the pavilion, the, um, 'cause it's been there for a while, and so when they went to hook it up, the battery was dead, because it requires electricity to charge the battery, so they put on a trickle charger on it, um, and they're also, when they come back to program the other, to put in the other two and program them, then they're gonna fix this one too.
Okay.
So, we have the one at the school, the senior citizens building, and the street shop. Um, we also have an old one that's still working out at the special yard south of town, um, we are going to set that one off tomorrow too and test it.
And the one near Ice Acres in Oakwood, still not yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not in, or what?
No, it's not in. We had, we had to find, um, because where the siren is currently, 'cause we tried to replace them in the same, pretty much the same spots, um, there's really no access to it, and so, we had to go find easements for, um, so we found a utility easement there on the north side of Ice Acres, and so we're able to put it right there.
Okay, thank you. Number six, other scheduled business, discuss, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action on the following. A, Planning Board and Board of Adjustments member search. On the Planning Board, we have Richard Hedrick, Dustin Monroe, Dustin Vincent, Rachel Rogers, we have one vacant. Board of Adjustments, we have Richard Hedrick, we have Dustin Winston, and we have Vincent, and we have three vacancies. So, we are looking for names to fill these.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to, um, ask the public over the next, till the end of April to, if they're interested on serving on one of those committees, or one of those boards, to contact us, so then we can put them before you guys with, um, like bios and different things, um, for you guys to, to select from.
Okay.
And if you guys have anybody, you know, where we can get their information to give you guys.
Okay.
And then that way, we would have them at the main meeting.
And they gotta live in city limits, right?
Yes, they do have to reside within city limits. Um, also, I would like to, at the main meeting, not only appoint new ones, but to actually set terms, because they're supposed to be three-year terms, and so, like, have two, two, one, you know, so that they would each have a term, so at the end of their term, if they decide to stay on, you guys can reappoint them, or we can find somebody else to replace them.
Imagine, these are the ones at the end of their term, are they still wanting to continue?
Um, I believe, I have not directly contacted them, um, but they, I mean, if we find more people, I'm sure one of them would step down.
Okay.
Or if not, I'm sure that they would.
'Cause I know they've been on there for several years.
Um, well, Richard Hedrick has been on the Planning Board since I've been here, so. And they only meet once or twice a year.
You jinx them.
Hopefully so, because when, I mean, if we ever did grow and stuff like that, they would start, they would start meeting more. So, hopefully I did jinx them, and we're gonna start growing, and we would have to meet more.
Good thing.
Okay. B, initial draft of the twenty-four, twenty-five Town of Hennessy budget.
I'm going to give you guys, this is just, um, you have to just hand us out sixty days prior to approving, and so, this is just an initial draft. What it includes is, all the department managers have given me their numbers, and I've put them in there, and then we will start fine-tuning over the next thirty days, we'll give you guys another draft next month, and then, um, once we, uh, then in June, we will approve. So, if you guys look through there, if you have any questions, concerns, please come see me.
Okay, so, I got a question. Tiffany, it's just on the agenda for us to just to discuss it tonight, and for you to hand this stuff out?
It's just to give you guys this, because that's when you have to initially wait in at least sixty days prior to approve.
Yeah, I understand. You don't expect any action on this tonight.
Oh, no, not at all.
All right, thank you.
No, just handing it out.
Got it.
And it has to be noted that I handed it out, so.
I love to read.
Go to C, approval of the contract for the Town Attorney for Jared Harrison. Did y'all have an opportunity to read this already?
When I sent it out a couple of weeks ago, um, I asked for any comments or anything that I needed to get back to Jared, and nobody responded, so.
I didn't see any changes from the one you sent out to the one we got?
It's the exact same one.
Okay, all right, good, yeah. I don't have anything on it, Cliff, I'm good with it. No comments or questions.
Harold?
I'm good.
Randy?
I'm good.
I make a motion to approve the con, uh, contract for the Town Attorney, Jared Harrison.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Harold?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
D, giving an incentive pay to employees who obtain additional certificates related to their jobs. Um, Alicia went to school and got her Class A water and waste license, so she's already has her A, her D, C, B, and now A, and in our wages, we don't have any compensation set up for going and getting there. I'm not just talking about her, but I think we, once we get a person certified one place, and then they go to school to another, I think we need to give them a, a raise to give them insi, other people incentives to do this also. And, and also, also know, and I, I don't wanna keep pushing her out there, but she's one of thirty-eight people in the state of Oklahoma that has an A, and we really, really need to keep her, and I know it's not just about money either, but money helps, but it's the way we treat people, uh, also, it's the way that we take care of them, and, and our benefits also included in there, but I would like to see us come up with a way, because our police officers have training they have to do, our people of the town, they have several different things that they need to do, and I would like to see compensation for that.
One question I got to ask on, on the deal, when they go up and get their different licenses and stuff, is there a contract they had to sign in Town Hennessy for them to get more certification, so we can pay for it, and they can be gone tomorrow?
Well, I'll, just like her and Bonny went last week for four days to get, Bonny got his Bs, um, B wastewater, and she got her A wastewater, um, they spent four days in class, um, so, yeah, they were gone away from the city for four days, so there's wages, but other than that, the classes were free.
Well, I think, oh, he was asking, is there a contract with our employees to keep them after they go to school? I think that's what he was asking.
We do not have any contracts on here, so it has a contract.
Like sometimes in the old field, if I train you to get a special class, you know, or your license, you know, you go, and I pay for it to go get it, and you go get it, and tomorrow you quit me, you gotta reimburse me for-
We don't have any of those.
No, we do not. That's why I think-
We had that in the, in the police department, where we pay for them to go to-
No, CLEET itself has, where if you quit within a year, you have to pay it back.
Okay, sorry.
But, um, the town does not.
But there's no cost for those classes, so it's not like we're paying the tuition or anything like that?
No.
Okay, so it's something they could actually go and do on their own if they wanted to, without calling anything?
We would have to sponsor them, yes.
Oh, okay.
I mean, Oklahoma Rural Water Association puts on all those classes, and they provide them free to their members, and we're a member of the Oklahoma Rural Water Association.
Okay.
Randy, what about the fire department? Uh, I just happen to know, and I don't know why I know this information, I just happen to know that Levi Copeland just went through some, some fairly aggressive-type training on self-aid, buddy care is what I call it, I don't know what you guys call it.
But he went, he, he went through an EMT course?
Yeah, yeah, so, my question is, is do any firefighters get additional pay for those kind of certifications?
No.
Okay.
Their pay is reimbursement for their time, not actual wages.
But if they get a certification, do they get a higher level of reimbursement?
No.
No matter how many certs you, you get in the fire department, your, your pay's gonna be the same.
That's correct.
Tiffany, I've, I've heard the term, uh, run pay, is that what you guys call it? They get paid for so many, so much for a run?
They get paid based on how many hours they sent, they spent performing as a volunteer firefighter.
Fighting, actually fighting the fire.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I got it. And the police, all we have in the police department is CLEET certification, is that right?
Um, they have CLEET certified, but then also, you take Aaron, and he's, um, uh, instructor qualified to do instruct taser, to instruct-
Yeah.
Firearms and different things like that, so they do go get more certifications.
So, can I ramble for a minute on this?
Yes.
Okay. Tiffany, I don't know how you're gonna receive this information, I mean it in a positive manner. If I was you, here's how I would manage that. I would manage it in the position job descriptions. Example, let's use Alyssa for an example, water department superintendent. In my mind, she should have the maximum amount of qualifications that she needs to perform as a superintendent in the water department. Then we got another tier of employees that work for her, I would consider them to be what I would call technicians. Their certification requirements should be lower than hers, but yet, very, at the very proficient level. And then we come down another rung in the ladder, we've got new employees coming in, which we do, I know we don't right now, but when we do, I would propose that the job description read, uh, uh, an entry-level certification for new employees, and/or even if you guys, what's the hire, say, interns to work for Alyssa, you know, for the summer or whatever. So, in my mind, the management tool you need to use for what we're talking about here is the job descriptions, and I know that you've been working on job descriptions, and I was wondering where we're at on that, and it's on topic, in my opinion, because I'm highly encouraging you to use job descriptions to manage what we're talking about here. If I'm not mistaken, we already have a pay scale for these certifications, with the exception of superintendent level, am I right? I think you told us that.
Well, we have for entry level, no certifications, we have a D, um, once they get their D, water wastewater, and then we have a C, water wastewater, and then there's nothing really, anything else after that.
Okay.
And I will tell you that to run our, the min, or the minimum qualification for a supervisor is a class, a class D wastewater, and a class, it's either C or B, we're right around the, where it changes.
Yeah.
And so, when they go get higher qualifications than what we're required to by state, then, I mean, I think it's, we're better off, because they know more, and they're able to, you know-
Yeah, well, so here's the deal, again, and you know my history.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, aircraft certifications, different levels, layers, it's like an onion, and, uh, so, in my opinion, this would have been a discussion that I would have had when I was promoting or hiring these employees into the position, based on the job description. Now, we haven't had any job descriptions. Let me ask you this, you've been here with the town now, I would say eighteen years, is that right? Is that what, okay, yeah, you had seventeen, and then now we're up to eighteen, and, and I know Bert's been here with the town, what, forty, forty-five? So, have we ever had job descriptions?
No.
No.
Only what's in the codebook.
Okay, see, and that's, to me, that's not-
I, I agree.
You need, you need a management tool, and, you know, and a, a job description is gonna be a, a, what I call a living document, that, you know, it would be your tool to manage the people, the way we've got the code set up right now, you're the manager of all the people.
Mm-hmm.
And you need tools to do that, and, and this is a very prime example in why I was bugging you a, a couple of three months ago about job descriptions, and, and then, you know, here this stuff comes up. I'm gonna be honest with you, it's gonna be, it's really hard for me, I know I'm taking up too much time here, Cliff, I'm sorry.
No, this is a very important matter.
This is why I put this on here, because I need help before I try to do anything.
It's, it's hard for me to vote yes tonight on what we're talking about.
Oh, I didn't expect you to vote yes.
No, this is a discussion.
Okay.
This is something that we really need to look at and pay attention to.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought we were gonna vote.
Well, okay, so, no, I have it on there, I mean, I had stuff on there to like, say, discuss, or something like that, or take action, but Kelly asked me, she's like, at the top line, it says discuss, take action, you know, different things, she's like, so it sounded repetitive.
Yeah.
So, that's, to me, now you guys don't know exactly what we're trying to do with each.
Well, I like, I like the fact that we can discuss stuff without a vote, that's important to me, also, yeah, yeah, so, but anyway, I, I think, I think you're, for your success, I would propose to you that you use job descriptions, and, and, we've already got the pay scale set for everybody but superintendents, that's all we gotta work with as far as deciding what we wanna pay. I'm, you guys are gonna have a hard time convincing me to pay incentive money for certifications. In my opinion, that should be part of the job, but I'm just one person on the board, so, you know-
But what if they go beyond what they're required to have? Like, Alyssa's only required to have either a C or a B, and she has put in the work to go and get as much training and certification as she can.
On that, I would recommend to you that you would consider that at the end of the year for her appraisal, and her, uh, you know, we always do bonuses, maybe she should get more of a bonus than other people. Does that make sense to you?
I agree, I mean, that's why I need, I need help here, because-
Right, I understand, and that's why I'm voicing so much stuff here, I'm just putting myself in your shoes, I'm not criticizing you or the way things have been in the past. It does surprise me, though, that this organization has never had job descriptions.
They haven't.
I, I would advise you on that, don't recreate the wheel.
Oh, I, I have several from other municipalities.
You do a lot of networking, I know that, and I would too if I was in your shoes. I don't network that much, because all I am is a member, trust me. But I know you network, and, and I'm, I'm glad you do, and you can come up with some job descriptions very quickly, and, uh, you know, digital, you can manipulate them to fit your needs, and, uh, I would recommend that, uh, that you manage it that way.
My other question is for people who are assigned extra duties, such as Aaron now is emergency manager, um, you take David Trainer, who is the superintendent over Parks and Cemetery, well, now he's also our flood plan administrator and our building inspector. I think that we need to, you know, those extra, those extra duties should, I mean, I'm asking you guys-
Don't we compensate them for that?
No.
How about we agreed to pay Aaron six hundred dollars more, uh, for the, being our emergency manager?
Nothing was ever-
We didn't, we didn't vote it on or anything like that, we had talked about it, because it was gonna, what it was gonna cost the Kingfisher County-
Aaron's gonna be sheriff, ain't he?
Even if he gets elected as sheriff, he can still serve as our emergency manager.
I understand.
Harold, what's your thoughts?
Uh, my, like I said, I, I was good, I was, my, my only, I come from the old field, I know that's different than city, and when we got trained for special fields and stuff like that, we were assigned to sign a contract that we'd stay with you for so long, you know, uh, I'd pay ten thousand dollars for a guy to go get a CDL, you know, and if you don't sign something like that, they can leave you the next day, you know, uh, and, you know, and, and they can still leave you the next day, the state of Oklahoma is the right-to-work law, their state, so they can still leave you the next day, but that contract does make you think about leaving, you know, so, uh, you know, that can't keep me from going to take another job, you know?
And I would have to check with our attorney, I would be afraid if we had a contract, if we was to go to terminate somebody, I just wonder if, at that point, it wouldn't be an at-will, it would be a contractual employee.
Yeah, mm, so, that, that's one thing, I, I mean, you answered the question.
Cliff, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, I, I think that it's a good idea to incentivize people going above and beyond, because I, you know, I don't, I don't, I think that should be reported, um, I don't, I don't wanna, you know, people to say, well, I have the B or C or whatever, and, and not strive to do, get to the top because of a lack of incentive, or, well, the pay doesn't change, why should I go and do, why should I go and get the extra, why should I go and learn as much as I should? So, I think it's important to make sure that, um, they're compensated for their, their, uh, time and their knowledge, because at the end of the day, that's what we're, that's what we're paying them for, you know, so.
Cliff, can I back up a little bit? Can I get another round?
Sure.
Okay, Tiffany, this is, this is a question, have you checked with other towns, do, do other towns incentivize, uh, water and sewer, uh, certification?
Um, no, I don't.
Okay, yeah, I realize, you know, I, I heard what Cliff said about discussion, uh, and another thing I wanted to say is, uh, I don't want you guys to take my conversation tonight as a negative on this topic, uh, I agree with, uh, some of the things that Cliff has said, and what Randy just said, and, and I understand what Harold said, uh, I, I just, I just wanna make sure, I think it's our job to make sure you have the management tools that you need to work these issues, and, uh, I think we need to work on that, and I, again, let me ask you this, I know you're working on job descriptions, have you got any final draft, or how much progress have you made?
There's, I think I have, 'cause I'm trying to make them kinda the same.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, sure.
Um, I think there's close to ten that are in draft.
Okay.
Just about ready to, to come.
Can you see them the first time? Okay, uh, so again, okay, my next question, my follow-up on that is, is, is are you gonna do, uh, the final on all that, or are we gonna get to see them?
Oh, no, you guys will approve all of them.
I realize that you are the person in charge of that stuff, so.
No, I, I plan on finishing my edits and stuff, and then giving them to our town attorney.
Okay.
Have him look at them, and see if he sees anything that needs to be changed, and then bring them to you guys.
Yeah, okay, so, will we get those electronically, or will we get them like this?
How do you want them?
I'd like to see them electronically.
'Cause that's normally how I send out everything, that's why I was asking.
I'd like to see them electronically right after the attorney sees them, and, and I might, you know, I might have an input. Odds are real high I probably won't, but my input, one, would be the stuff that we're talking about.
Yeah.
If you guys don't put that in there, and I'm gonna at least send it back to you and recommend it again, even though I sound like a broken record, I just wanna go on record with my-
No, I appreciate you guys responding back to me and telling me if you have any suggestions or comments or concerns.
All right, thank you, thank you, Cliff.
You bet. Okay, we'll go to E. Scheduling a work session to go through the- Scheduling a work session to go through the draft of the town code.
Is there a day, a couple of days next week, that during the afternoon, we can get together for a work session, um, to go over this code?
I am now retired, I can be here at any time that needs to be done.
I'm out of town Monday through Wednesday, next week.
So Thursday afternoon, could you?
What time, afternoon?
Uh, what time can you?
My boss and my boss's boss are both on vacation next week, so I'm left in charge.
So where did you better?
So, um, evening would be easier for me, but I, I can't speak for everyone else, so.
I got a medical one day next week, and I can't remember what it is, I'm sorry.
This, this, the rest of this month's pretty booked up for me, except for in the evenings.
I can do evening, like Randy.
So can we do Thursday, next Thursday at five P M?
Sure.
I'm here.
I mean, I hate to push it back any later, because it may take us, I mean, we need to go through that, and then I can check and see, 'cause I think that Thursday's maybe, um, uh.
She gotta be here?
Does she have to? No, she does not have to. I mean, it'll be a meeting, but, I mean, there's not a lot of, I mean, I mean, but she's off on Thursdays, too.
Thursdays, Thursdays, the weather's bad on Thursday, so I can be here Thursday.
The weather's bad on Thursday?
Yeah, it's gonna be too windy to fish.
Now Monday, the weather's gonna be bad.
So, yeah, I can do this on a non-fishing day, no problem.
I mean, but I could take, I mean, roll call and adjournment, that's pretty much all we really need. Um, I, speaking of work sessions, I would really like to start, if you guys can make it happen, on our meeting days, to start at five, and do a work session from five to six, and then go into a meeting at six. 'Cause these, some of these stuff that we're talking about tonight, we can actually, 'cause we're not taking any action, we could be talking about this stuff in a work session.
What about the town attorney, are you gonna have him attend the, uh, the code review work session?
Yes, I think he's off the third Thursday, so I'm gonna try to get him here.
Can you send out a text? I'll forget. I guess we have to have an agenda out, too, then, right, since it is a meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. So it'll be okay then. F, directing the town administrator to get updated engineer and. I'm sorry. Uh, directing the town administrator to get an updated engineer's estimate, plan for the municipal roads, drilling activities, fund grant to fix the South Mitchell Road and Cemetery Road.
Yes.
Definitely. Do you need to have a motion, and? I make a motion to direct the town administrator to get an updated engineer's estimate for the municipal roads and drilling activities grant, to fix the South Mitchell Road and Cemetery Road.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Isn't Conoco Park County, like, don't they have half of that?
Did we say Conoco?
What? Yeah, Conoco and Mitchell.
Said it's Conoco.
Does it say Conoco, it's supposed to say cemetery.
Cemetery and South Mitchell.
Oh, okay, so.
South Mitchell and Cemetery.
Darn.
Hold on.
Let's try.
Well, on the, on the map, it does show workplaces, too. On that map that was in the email you sent us, shows workplaces.
It should Conoco Red?
Mitchell Red, from Seven Street to Conoco.
Conoco, yes, but I think he's.
No, I was hoping for Conoco Road, not just to Conoco Road.
Oh.
Never mind.
My only deal, it's, it says you have to have that completed in a year.
Well, that, we're, like, the engineer, um, I brought this up, what is it, about a year and a half ago? Um, or two years ago?
Year and a half, yeah.
Um, they did it into like, a five-year plan, so we would apply for the money, we would do a section, and then get that done, and then go the next year after more money, and they're really pushing this, there's money out there, and so.
Designate a town administrator Tiffany Tillman to the authorized agent and payroll clerk Hannah Larson as the authorized signer for the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund Plan. You wanna kind of go over that, please, Tiffany?
So when we have employees who start, and we have to sign them up, we have to be able to, um, sign paperwork, kinda saying, yes, they work here, these are, you know, make sure everything's correct. Um, and then, in order to change the signers, you have to have an authorized agent, and so, um, to be able to, to do stuff, too. And so that's what that is. It's just with the retirement fund.
Okay, I've got a motion, if you guys are, ready, quick, ready?
Ready.
Make a motion to designate town administrator Tiffany Tillman as the authorized agent, and payroll clerk Hannah Larson as the authorized signer for the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund Plan.
I will second that. Roll call, please.
Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Number seven, new business, any matter not known, or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda, in accordance with Section three, one-one-nine, Title twenty-five O S. Number eight, citizen comments? Yes, ma'am.
I would like to ask Harold if he would give the, his report on the Hennessy United meeting.
About what part?
Pardon?
About what part, the red card bit?
Whatever, pop your cork.
Well, that's what, uh, the Wine Festival is October the ninth, that's what, yeah, so. There was some reports that it was gonna be the same day as the car show, which it's not, you know, so. Uh, you know, it's going around in Facebook, I should say, I know, I know it should, I mean, I, I think even Jackson, uh, com, or, all about Hennessy commented about it was, so, I just wanted to put the extra tag out there about the, uh, Wine Festival. One thing that I want to know also, is, is there any way we can ever get bathrooms at, uh, the park? Where come bathrooms down there?
Memorial Park. Memorial Park.
Memorial Park. Is there anything we can do about, maybe get bathrooms down there, besides?
I, I thought that Hennessy United had put, uh.
We do.
They do have some money, put towards, you know, that's one thing, I brought up to, that was there, was, uh, or me that was there, that maybe, was there any way we could get bathrooms put in here? You know, we kinda get an estimate to what it would cost to put bathrooms in there.
Because we had to take part of the money that we had set aside for that, to get the clock fixed, because the town, uh, apparently did not wanna pay for it. So we took it out of that, and it was like twenty or thirty thousand for that, I think.
At one time, I think they had, if I ain't mistaken, they had thirty thousand dollars, I think they got ten for sure.
I can't.
Change, I don't, I don't, the exact numbers weren't thrown out there. I, I was, they were just asking what, whatever, what could we do to get the bathrooms at that park?
I know, it's been discussed numerous times, we've looked into grants and stuff, but, um, the boards in the past really didn't wanna give up the park space for a bathroom facility.
That, we had that discussion, too.
Yeah.
But.
You know, you know, and that's why, you know, they asked, because we're building a pavilion, you know, who's to say that the Wine Festival don't move over there, once that gets developed, but still, you know, permanent bathrooms at that park, there are a lot of travelers coming through town.
May I ask a question? Because the, the space came up at our meeting, too. Since there is a, uh, right behind that, there's an alley. Is there any way that that land could be?
One bad thing about where that land's at, during harvest season, that alley can. Bid you in Main Street some days.
The alley is?
Yes, sir. Especially, especially with that flea wagon on the corner, you know, you know.
Well, we don't have to have that flea wagon. Well, I mean, I'm just, you know.
We can't tell them to move, I mean.
Yeah.
They're on their property.
Six o'clock in the morning, and stuff like that, that place down, right down there.
Right, yeah.
Is a traffic jam, some, some mornings, so, you know, I'm just going, you know, by what's actually goes on in, in that area, and harvest and stuff like that, it even gets even worse, so, you know, uh, so, uh, you know, I don't think you can block an alley, and I don't think by law, you have to have that alley open for fire trucks, and, you know, any ambulance services, or anything like that, that's got to be able to go down by that alley, I know there aren't people that live there, but there's people that work there, and all that, so, I, I don't know all the legality part.
Yeah, I was gonna say, but once it's a, an alley, does it stay an alley? I don't think so, 'cause there was an alley behind our house, and there's not one there now.
You can close any alley, but you also have to look at it as a safety. Because you got rain elevators, and.
Oh, I understand the fire, definitely.
Power poles, it's just.
Definitely, the, the fire, I get that. Okay.
I don't know all the.
The G D wouldn't allow you to build underneath their power lines, 'cause they've got the power lines right through there, too. Yeah, yeah, they'd have a problem with that, for sure.
Yeah, it's only, I don't know about giving up just a ten-foot section of a park, if that would be that big of a deal.
It would have to be bigger than some of these, 'cause you'd have to make that ADA.
Well, you know, it only has to be ten feet wide, and, you know, I don't know, what?
So what size?
Then you're only gonna, okay, so, and this is, I mean, how big do you make the bathroom, how many stalls? Because if you have a big event, two bathrooms is not, you're still gonna have to have porta potties.
I didn't say you gotta get rid of the porta potties. You know, what about the visitors down there that stop in there, and actually, every time, a woman's gotta go use the restroom, seems like, you know.
Well, then they're gonna stop at a business, and hopefully spend money, and then go to the restroom.
Bingo.
If the rest, if the, I don't know what, yeah.
No, all the quick stops will.
But, it's just a question.
No, I mean, that's just, it was because that park is kinda statues, and just, like.
We get the pavilion going up, and I'll just say this, Jackson controls that, one of the first things they're gonna want there is bathrooms.
I agree.
You know, you can't put a bathroom for fifteen hundred people, for, you know, for a flea market, or whatever, you know.
But I still think you make a.
Two stalls.
I still think you make a bigger, over here at the pavilion, you make a bigger bathroom with a few more stalls than just one stall in each bathroom.
Cliff, I was gonna stay out of this one, but I do have some comments, I'm sorry, Harold, I didn't mean to talk over you.
Okay.
Something else that we may wanna consider, at, at the park, here on Main Street, is, not only bathrooms, but bathrooms, I don't know what the ADA requirements are, but that might, ought to be consideration in our conversation. I'm talking wheelchair access. Wheelchairs can't get in porta potties, at least, I haven't seen one do that. Uh, and, and I can flip that over to the pavilion, long-term planning, we're probably gonna need ADA compliant stuff over there, too.
You have to, if you build anything, it all has to be ADA.
I got you, including parking. Reserved handicap parking, so, that's, that's something that I meant to bring up the other night at the Hennessy United, but I, I let it slip my mind, and, and that, that's, you know, that's something that's very important. I'm lucky that I don't need to, don't need that myself, but.
We don't need it yet.
I probably will in the very near future. That's all I got, Cliff.
Okay.
Thank you.
But I'll get the estimate.
Thing is, they might come up with more money, you know.
If we just knew how much it would cost, so that we could see if we need to raise more money, and if, how the town could, could work with us on that and paying for it.
Um, may I? The, what, what I have seen, and, and I, 'cause I was part of all that conversation for seven, eight years.
Yes.
And the, the problem has been, that there's never been a strategic plan to do the bathroom, it's been a lot of conversations, they had Curtis draw something up on a piece of paper, there was never, like, we never hired an architect, we never hired an engineer, we never, we never got, uh, a strategic plan, this is how big we're being, this is how big it costs, these are the problems with it, here are the ADA issues, and it's just been flung around. So, the correct way to do it, I guess it's you guys' job, is to ask Tiffany, or somebody, to take the correct steps, like you were building a, a new town hall, I mean, it's essentially that, with a reason, I guess, but, um, you know, to, to take the correct steps, to find out is it even feasible to put a bathroom there, and then, well, how big would it have to be, based on, like, the Wine Festival, I guess is our biggest event there, based on that many people, you might find that you're gonna need twenty-five stalls, you know, that would take up half the park, well, that's not feasible. So, um, we need, we need probably a little feasibility study first.
In my opinion, and this is just what I was kinda, I know it'd be nice to have a bathroom at the park there, but since we are going to have this pavilion we're building, I think it would be better, money spent using the bathroom at our new pavilion, and then putting it at the park, because this could be the last year that the Wine and Cheese Festivals, we've got, oh, Chocolate Festivals over here, and then we'll have our pavilion put up by then, and then we'll be using this.
What I got from, what I got from our meeting, Hennessy United does not wanna move from that park. They like it right there on Main Street, they, uh, you know, uh, and that actually kinda shows the case of Hennessy, every day, the park, the old nine yards, and they like it there, you know, I ain't saying they ain't gonna like it there, if they ever, wherever to move there. You know, 'cause the first chance of rain out, and all of a sudden, we're down here, oh man, why aren't we down here more often? You know, it might change everybody's mind, but that right there is, is, you know, the.
Location, 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 as far as.
So, yeah, that's where it's been, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, let's just say.
And, everybody don't like to change from the old to the new, you know, just 'cause we're building something, you know, so.
But is it worth the bathrooms in that park for one event a year? Just, just asking.
But it's not gonna, we're having the car show, uh, that'd be there, you're having, you have, uh, we have, uh, farm and market stuff here on Main Street, and it's busy, people popping in, and everybody says that, uh, go to the restaurants, or go there, but a lot of restaurants, you ain't gonna go in there and use their restaurants, uh, restaurant, if, if you're not eating.
What's it cost, for the porta potties, do you know?
I don't.
About a hundred and thirty dollars a night, wasn't it?
Mm-mm, no, it's cheaper than that.
I think it was more than that.
Not, not for us, when we get on, because we got, um, if I'm not mistaken, we got, for the car show last year, the town purchased those, and we got fifteen porta potties, and it was only like four hundred and some odd dollars.
Oh, if you all pay for them for that, would you pay for them for the Wine and Chocolate Festival, then?
I mean, the Wine and Chocolate Festival charges, but the car show does not, I think that that's how that.
Well, they have to charge to get, to enter these, the competitions, I don't think.
No, they only charge, charge for the competitions to raise fu, funds for prize money.
Oh, all of the money goes back into the prizes, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, I did not understand that.
Yeah.
But that's up to the board, by, by.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know.
That's how we've kind of said, because otherwise, many people would be asking the town, but we were able to take it off.
That's just like down there at the softball tournament, the bathrooms are open down there, they don't have a lot of stalls, and there's sometimes hundreds of kids down there and adults.
And they should have more stalls. And speaking of that, sometimes for those softball tournaments, they will come to the town and we will open up the pool bathrooms for them.
But I'm just saying, you know, there's that deal down there, you know, that bathroom's not big enough for that deal down there. You know, that, I'm saying, it wouldn't be, you know, whether we do it there, or even at the pavilion, or whatever, you know, it wouldn't be bad to have a public restaurant on Main Street, or restaurant on Main Street somewhere.
Our main idea when we even started the Wine and Chocolate Festival was that we needed, we were gonna do festivals, we wanted reasons for people to come to Hennessy. And we tried, we've tried several different things, and this is the one that has happened to, it really took off that first year, we never expected to have 1,500 people to try to crowd around that park. And so, that, that's all how this got started. And if anybody has any other ideas of other festivals that we can have, we're ready to go with that. I'm glad they're doing the car show, that does the same thing, it brings people to town. And they spend their money while they're here.
Would he not have four to five events in Hennessy a year?
Yes.
It would be.
That brings us money, you know.
Okay, to move on, Councilperson's report, David?
Yes, Cliff, I've got a few things here.
Okay.
I'll try to make it quick. And the first thing I want to do is I actually want to address the citizens of town. Tonight, I just voted, I just voted no on our town consent agenda, and I've done that the past couple of meetings, I think maybe even more than two. And I want to tell the citizens why, I want everybody to know what I'm up to. And I'm not trying to shoot at any one individual, specifically you, Cliff. We talked about, you know, getting this information before the cutoff. I'm not, I'm not cutting you down, okay? Last night about 5:30, I got a big gob of information for tonight's meeting. I had a medical appointment today. I was unable to go over all this information. I've asked repeatedly, on way more than one occasion, that I want to copy, or I want to be able to copy what other towns are doing. Other towns get their, the board gets their information for the meeting four business days in advance. That would be perfect for me. I want to emphasize business days, because here recently, we've changed our meeting starting next month, and everybody's talking about now we get our information on Friday, and so we've got four days for Tuesday. Well, I might need town hall open to research what I want to research. As a matter of fact, I, I've got some stuff, Tiffany, I'll be getting with you on stuff from tonight. I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that I'm not, I'm not able to cover the load of information from 5:30 last night to 6 o'clock tonight, not only to read it, but to study it and to prepare myself and make decisions in my mind as to whether, as to how I'm gonna vote on the issues. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, so, with that said, as long as we keep getting our information at the last minute, I will continue to vote no, not approved. And why do I do that? We're going through a state audit. One thing I've learned in this audit already, and I haven't even talked to the audit team about, one of the main things that I've learned in this state audit is, it appears to me that some of the most important documents that they have asked for is meeting agendas and meeting minutes. Am I right or am I wrong? They've asked for tons of meeting agendas and meeting minutes. So, you may not even know Kelly, I think Kelly responded on some of that stuff. This, it's important to me, is what I'm trying to tell you. It's very difficult for me to look at all this, all this stuff here on the consent agenda and vote yes on it without knowing what's on it, and I just can't do that. So, I'm gonna continue to vote no. Now, back to the citizens, I want you all to know that I'm not gonna just ignore this information and throw it in the garbage can. At my convenience, which will probably be this coming weekend, I will go over this information in detail, and anything that I have a problem with, I'll get with Ms. Tillman on it, and get her to either straighten me out on it, or give me some answers to my questions, or whatever. And again, I'm not trying to make this a negative, I'm just telling you that the way we do business here is not acceptable to me, and I'm gonna continue voting no. And I'm trying to do it in a professional manner and not point fingers at people. Okay, with that said, Tiffany, oh, now I want to talk about the records clerk stuff again. I'm looking at your report here, and you say that you're still trying to locate information on who should have the responsibility by state statute that indicated the town clerk. I'm gonna probably, I'm gonna probably email you tomorrow and ask you for the reference on that, if you don't mind.
Sure.
And I'd like to study that. And again, we don't have a full-time town clerk, that's true, and we probably aren't, as long as Kelly's in office, everybody knows that. You said you're still trying to figure out who should have that responsibility, your next step is to get with Mr. Harrison. I like that idea, I think that's great. Question, have you, the last meeting, I advised you to go to the July 23 All About Hennessy video of our meeting and listen to Mr. Dodson's lecture. He lectured for an hour and a half on this topic, records, Open Records Act, records clerk, record, records custodians, et cetera, et cetera. Did you have time to go look at that video?
Uh, no, I did not.
Okay. Again, I highly, highly, highly recommend it.
I know.
That video, that video, you can ask Barb or Cliff, that video will answer 99% of your questions, and you can get that other 1% from Mr. Harrison, and you'd be set to go.
Well, what I was understanding is it told us what records were available, but not who actually supplies them. But they have to be available from our open hours.
Right.
Yes, so that's.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's why I'm trying to, because if you read state statutes, it says that the town clerk is the records custodian. It also states in there that they have to be available from eight, or your open hours, 8:30, 4:30.
Yeah.
And so, it's to me, then who puts it on there, because those people are not, I mean, the town clerk is actually responsible. And so, I, but I will go listen to it.
Yeah, and our town clerk don't even have a key to the building, and she don't have a workstation. So, you know, how can she help us there?
That's why we got a laptop for her, so she would be able to.
Let me back up, let me back up to Mr. Dodson again. I just happen to know this, as a matter of fact, I think he said it in the briefing that he gave us that night, July 13, 2023, that's the date on the video that Jack still has out on the, on the internet. Mr. Dodson just happens to be the records custodian for the state auditor and inspector's office. So, not only does he know working knowledge of it and to the auditing level, so he can come in and audit, you know, organizations on the, on the Open Records Act, he's also the actual records custodian for the state auditor's office. And so, he is probably the most qualified guy on earth to answer your questions. And again, if you look at his video first, you're probably gonna get most of your questions answered. All right, I'll stop. Okay? Again, that's advice, I'm not telling you what to do. And again, you've always got your fallback, you can talk to, I think, Mr. Whitlock presented himself as very knowledgeable on town hall operations.
Yes, Steve is very.
I know you network with him. Ryan, I would say Ryan is a pretty good records guy too. Have you, you deal with him too, or you have?
Yeah, he calls me all the time with questions.
He's asking for help, yeah. Well, I'd be willing to bet he's got some.
Um, but the thing on the, as far as the, the information being available for you guys, I think that that's something that you need to go back and look at your trustee handbook, and that right there in there, it sets timelines on when's, like, when the deadline is to post up on the agenda, when there's different deadlines, and when it needs to be available. So, I think if you guys go back and revisit that and make changes to that, to where that gives us direction as to when you guys want things cut off and available to you guys.
Yeah, well, I understand, I understand. And I've also, I too read state law, and I've read up on this several times. And again, it's not all your fault, there is town board responsibilities in the Open Records Act environment. And I think that we need to take some actions, and I'll, I'll tell you what I'm gonna do, I'll put it on the agenda for next month's meeting. If nothing else for discussion, Cliff, and I'll bring some, some of my, some of my documentation in on the topic. And again, Tiffany, to be helpful, not, not to be hurtful, okay? But we've got to fix this, this, this Open Records Act deal here in town. Not for me, we need to fix it for our citizens. They need to be able to come in and get records. Simple records are supposed to be available on the spot, complicated records are supposed to be available within a certain timeframe that we establish.
And I think since I've been back, like, I've been taking over it, except for if it's stuff that Kelly has that I don't have access to, but most records requests that has been asked for since I came back, they have been given instantaneously.
Okay, that's very good, I'm glad to hear that. I have not received any citizen complaints on the topic, by the way. Okay, I'm gonna, I got a third topic real quick, real quick, Cliff. Water meters. I'm still getting citizen complaints on water bills. They still don't want to come up here. They want to know what's going on. So, here's my question, where are we on the new water meter installation? And.
They're supposed to have them completed by May 1st.
May 1st is the estimated time of completion.
Yes.
That's very good. I will, I will start on some of the citizens that call me, I will let them know May the 1st. Now, I was also expecting our water billing rates to be on the agenda tonight.
Our water billing rates, we're gonna talk about that in the next meeting.
Okay, all right, I thought it was gonna be tonight, I'm sorry.
No, it's.
It's on the H-way. See, when you talk about water meters and water is on the Hennessy United, our Hennessy Utilities Authority.
Yeah.
Right, I'll head it myself, I get it. Uh, thank you very much, but I understand we'll get there. Okay, I just wanted you to know, number one, I am still getting water meter complaints, water reading, water billing complaints.
And I really wish they would come to town hall, because that's the only way we can address it.
Yeah.
I mean, honestly.
Well, here's what they're telling me, they're telling me, as soon as they walk in up here, you guys tell them about a water leak. Let me ask you this. If I come in up here and I say Tiffany, or Shelley, whoever I'm talking to, I think I have a water leak, can you help me look at my meter data to tell me yes or no, do I have a water leak? Can you pull a 24-hour time, time chart on my water meter where I can look at it and see if my water's running while I'm sleeping?
So, what we do is immediately, when somebody comes and they're complaining about a high bill, we immediately put out a work order to do a field test.
Okay.
That field test goes back 33, 35 days.
Okay.
And it will tell you each hour throughout the 24 hours.
24 hours times 30.
It lists the hour.
Yeah.
And how much water you use during that hour.
Okay.
So, and that's where we look at and go, oh, there's no zeros.
Yeah, so it's running all the time.
It's running all the time.
All right.
Sometimes we get days that it runs for like four days straight, and then it stops.
I get it.
But we get those reports, once we get the report, usually that day, we will call the customer and go, hey, we have your report up here, you can come and get it, this is what we're seeing.
Okay. Yeah, you know, and, you know, we've had a lot of water billing issues, you helped, you helped a lot by doing your briefing a few meetings back. I remember that, you did a great job on that, you clarified it for a lot of people. There's still some people that are a little, a little leery of it.
Well, also, I think because part of the new, and I know we're supposed to be in the next meeting to talk about this, because we're getting ready to talk about it, but when we switch over to billing by the gallon, it's gonna get a lot better for people.
Okay. I'm good. I'm probably gonna do a records request next week for you to pull one of those data pulls on my meter.
Okay.
Just so I can look at it and talk to people on the phone about it.
Yeah.
I don't need somebody else's, I'll just do mine.
And I'll also tell you that if you get a complaint that we are one way or another in here, we have video cameras in there now, and it has a microphone. So, we can go back and we can listen, if somebody comes in there and says, hey, I went in there and Tiffany was not very nice to me.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's not what I'm talking about.
Bet, or they wouldn't help me with my problem.
Yeah, yeah.
We can pull that now.
Yeah, very good.
And we can see exactly, kind of like the, the cameras on the police officers.
Yeah. Yeah, or the bank.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I might pull some of that data. I'll talk to you about it a little more next week. Thank you, Cliff, I'm sorry.
Harold?
I'm good.
Randy?
I don't have anything.
I'm making motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
This is the Hennessy Utilities Authority Board of Trustees, regular meeting, April 11, 2024, Town Hall Council Room, call to order, roll call, please.
Randy?
Here.
Mert?
Here.
Cliff?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
Dave?
Here.
Two, consider approval of consent agenda. A, approve minutes of the February meeting. B, approve the claims as follows, March purchase orders for 2639, April purchase orders, $77,868.48, April mineral deposit refunds is zero.
I make a motion, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Other scheduled business, discuss, accept, approve, deny, reject, and/or take any action on the following. A, initial draft for the 2024-25 Hennessy Utilities Authority budget. Tiffany has handed that out to us, right?
Yes, it's part of that.
It's part of the other one?
Yes.
Thank you. B, given an incentive pay to employees to obtain additional certifications related to their jobs. We have discussed that, we are going to look at doing a handbook, right? That's what we're looking at?
Job description.
Job description.
And then listing.
Okay. C, increase the utilities rates to match the inflation rate over the last couple of years.
Uh, just something, and this is not to make a decision on anything or anything tonight, it's just information, because in doing the budget, we're gonna propose that we, I'm gonna propose that we raise the water rates. Inflation, we have not raised water rates since September 2022. The inflation rate for 2022 was 9.43%. The inflation rate for 2023 was 4.06. So, we're talking 14% inflation, and the town of Hennessy has absorbed all the, all of the inflation rate in their water rates. Not only that, I attached a letter from the garbage company, every year in their contract, they're able to go up 3%, they have the past couple of years, and we have not raised our garbage rates. So, these are just some of the information I wanted to put forth to you guys, so when we come with some increases in water, sewer and garbage, that it's not, it's not just we're trying to raise rates, we're trying to cover the added expenses now that we have. I also included water rates in there from Okeen and water rates from Sealing. Okeen is around about what we are, maybe a little less, Sealing is higher than us, and I will tell you, Sealing has a water treatment plant, Okeen does not. So, there's gonna be the difference there. So, just something for you guys to review, if you guys have questions, please come see me, and I will be putting further information out over the next couple of weeks.
Okay, you said that we were going to change to charging by the gallon?
Yes, and that's part of, right there is the old rates that we approved in 2022. Yes, and that's part of, right there is the old rates that we approved in twenty twenty-two. And what I'm gonna do is break it down into by the gallon instead of by the thousand gallons. So it'll be like point oh oh, it would be like point oh oh three something or point oh oh six is the.
So is the minimum gonna be like a thousand gallons or what?
It, the minimum would cover a thousand gallons.
The minimum would cover a thousand gallons.
Mm-hmm, and then anything over that would be charged by the gallon.
Is it generally that people use a thousand dollars or more than that?
Oh, we, you don't have very many that use less than a thousand.
Don't have very many that use a thousand dollars?
But we have some that use twelve hundred and they go up to that six thousand. Or we have some that use like, I don't know, nineteen ninety-nine, they go up to that thousand. But everybody's getting the same, even though, say Kelly used twelve hundred and I used nineteen hundred, we're paying the same and she used seven hundred gallons less than I did. Does that make sense?
Also with the sewer also, because the sewer is based on gallons used.
So this will make it more accurate to what you're actually using?
Yes.
Okay.
So how you do it with people that's got, uh, subject tanks?
If they have subject tanks, they don't get charged sewer.
Even like if they're in town or?
There's not very many that have them in town, but those.
Ix Akers or?
Ix Akers is only water and garbage. There's a few people in town that don't have, uh, that are not on our sewer system. Um, and so those don't, they do not get charged sewer.
A, other discussion on the.
I'm gonna just show you, this will pull one for your meter too tomorrow. But just right here, like the company we did, they called in.
Yeah.
And like it shows like each hour how much water and so like.
I do, yeah. So this was the reading at two thirty-six, at three thirty-six?
That's how many gallons they used. These are how many, not the readings, but how many gallons they used.
How many gallons.
They used in that hour.
Okay, wow, okay.
Yeah.
Do you mind pulling that into the board?
Yeah.
I'll come up and get it, of course.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
So how, what's our contract with, uh, Waste Connections, how long is that contract?
I think it was five years.
Five years, and we signed it a year ago?
Two years ago?
Two years ago, in twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
So we go through twenty-seven with them?
Well, you know, it seems like inflation, inflation goes up every year, but kind of the community that we live in, not all of our employees are not government or how you wanna say it, you know, all these oilfield people, they don't get inflation raises, uh, raises or stuff like that.
This is not raises, this is talking about the water bills.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're raising our rate, it is raised, we raise the rates.
But, but the inflation includes all the parts, the chemicals, the, all of that stuff that we're paying out to provide them with that water.
If you're on fixed income of seven hundred dollars a month, social security, and you raise your water bill up to another thirty dollars a month, what are them people gonna do? I'm just, you know.
I don't think we're looking at a thirty dollar increase either for a minimum usage person who's on.
We live in a small community, every, you know, I'm just saying, it's, you know, every year, you know, I know that last one was in twenty-two, this is twenty-four, you know, seems like every year, every two years, we wanna get, and some of our senior citizens are getting by just by what they're getting by with right now.
I think we need to look at, like, on them, they do, the government does raise theirs a certain percentage per year.
So you just wanna take that away from them? I mean, the.
I didn't say I wanted to take that away from them, I'm just saying.
You know, three percent or five percent, that's seven hundred, you know, thirty-five dollars a month and it's going straight to them.
Well, it's either that or the town doesn't function as a utility company.
I, I understand what you're saying, there's other ways that, there's any other ways to look at it, you know? Uh, you know, one of these days, we're gonna be old.
Has, has Alyssa got any of the math on what we're talking about?
Has Alyssa?
Or you, I'm talking about the difference in prices of, you just mentioned prices going up. Have you guys got any historical math that could, that we could look at?
I will, I will get that, because two years ago when I did this, I, I brought in how much fuel had went up, um, how much parts had changed, like different, like the cost of the parts, like from this part to this, you know, say you have a, a, uh, a meter core, like this is how much it was back then and this is how much it is now.
Yeah.
Um, just pipe, how much pipe was here and how much pipe is then? Chemicals, the chlorine, the caustic, the.
I for one would be very interested in all that in order to prepare myself to vote on this issue. I don't know if my colleague would want that information or not, but.
No, I did that last time, I will get that for you.
I mean, like I do, is, I work in oilfield and, and I see that, like, our town's slowing down. You know, the rigs ain't moving like they were a year ago. So these guys are working less hours and, and, and can't afford everything and everything's keeping going up, you know? And I know, you know, we gotta, we gotta maintain our stuff, I understand that. But also you gotta look after our citizens, if we don't want them to move out here, you know? Uh, you know, not everybody's got, you know, I got a good job, you know, not everybody's got one, you know? Uh, hands sitting down on rigs and, you know, uh, I even know some of the big companies said, hey, you're, the, uh, raises are frozen for a year, you know, already, you know? And we're just fourth month into the year and they're saying it's gonna get even worse by the end of the year. So, you know, I've seen them just working slow down, you know? Uh, you know, we, we are an oilfield community.
I, I agree. Um, and, because I've tried to, over the years, tried to understand that because some people slow down and some people speed up, but they tell me that the oilfield is in a cycle. Like some parts of the oilfield will slow down while then the other parts come up and so, um, but I will tell you, the traffic on Main Street has not changed.
I'm good.
Okay, new business, any matter not known, which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting of the agenda in accordance with the section three one one dash nine, title twenty-five O S. This isn't comments?
My lord. What'd you say on, what, what, what are you, about Hennessy United, you throwing me under?
Yeah, hey, well, you're their representative.
Dave was there.
Council person report, Randy?
I don't have anything.
Harold?
I'm good.
Anything? I'm sorry, council person?
Uh, nothing, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing, sir.
I second that, roll call please.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.